Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order at seven o'clock the meeting, the board meeting of the Arcadia Unified School District. First order of business is road call. Every board member is present and every member of the executive team is also present, and also our student representatives. Anvita Malapati. First, before we begin, let's just have the pleasure of allegiance led by Mr. Raymond Chung.
So, Mr. President, please stand. Stand up your arms, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical liberty and justice of this world.
Mr. Chung, I believe you also have inspiration for this evening.
I do, thank you, Mr. President. I'm just gonna wait a sec to get the screens up. I always make things a little more complicated. Start from the beginning, Scott. All right. Thanks, Scott. So, since we are starting our new school year with the theme Forward Together, I thought I would take some inspiration from President Ying, actually, and do a short Chinese lesson. So, one of the ways to write Forward Together in Chinese is this. In Mandarin, it's pronounced yi qi jian ching. In Cantonese, yat hei chin chung. Literally, it means one group advancing forward or progressing forward. One of these words is actually pretty interesting. This one, jian or chin, which means forward or front. And what makes it interesting is that in the Chinese language, the concept of time is actually the opposite from how we typically think about it. This is jian tian, or day before, yesterday. So, here, the word forward is actually used to describe something in the past, day before yesterday, rather than the future, which was what we would be used to. So, it makes a lot of sense, though, if you think about time like a stream that's flowing away from you, watching it flow away, and the water that flows past you are the things you've already experienced. And behind you, what you can't see are all the events to come. So, as we think about Forward Together, it's important that while we look forward to the future, we do so with full acknowledgement and appreciation for all that we've experienced, all the traditions we've celebrated, all the lessons we've learned. And we do so knowing that as we go forward, our future is unknown and uncertain. We will be comforted, heartened, that we will do so together with common purpose, common cause, working together as we go. That is my inspiration today, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chung. Very appropriate for beginning the school year. Next, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Mrs. Chavez, second by Mrs. Yee. All those that approve, say aye.
Aye.
Five of them. Next on our agenda are audience comments. Before we begin, I have a script to read. It is now time for audience comments. The Board respects the right of members of the public to speak to the Board regarding matters on the agenda and other matters within the Board's jurisdiction. In accordance with Board bylaws, individual speakers will be allowed three minutes to address the Board. A maximum of eighteen minutes total will be allocated for public comments. To ensure that everyone who completed the request to speak card has an opportunity to be heard, we will be keeping time and we will inform each speaker when they have one minute left, and then when their time is up, so that the meeting can proceed in orderly manner and efficient manner. Additionally, in accordance with Board policies, this Board is committed to maintaining an environment that fosters mutual respect amongst everyone in our community. This includes having fruitful discussions in a respectful and civil manner, even on issues that individuals may feel passionately about. Therefore, disturbances or willful interruptions of the meeting will not be tolerated. I would also like to remind the audience that this meeting is being recorded and also livestreamed on YouTube and can be accessed at boardmeeting.ausd.net. With that said, we will now hear from our first speaker. Our first speaker is Miguel Arambula.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time. Hello, my name is Miguel Arambula. Tonight, I'm here along with a group of parents who are greatly concerned about Kelly Arena, who was installed as the Longley Way Principal last year. Throughout the 2021-2022 school year, parents, proctors, staff, and teachers alike have attempted to bring forth and escalate systemic issues regarding the principal's poor performance to no avail. The feedback was not being taken seriously or was dismissed. The repeated problems that this school community saw ranged from her ineffectiveness in addressing school violence and bullying to a lack of integrity and conflicting messaging, all the way up to her use of intimidation on both parents and students alike. Furthermore, many of us were frustrated by her frequently unresponsive and untimely and ineffective communication skills and her extreme unwillingness to cooperate or take constructive feedback that she herself would ask for. We at Longley Way are proud that our school is exemplary in so many ways, especially with our dedicated teachers and an active, strong community of families. However, as we stand here before you this evening, we are confident that our current principal is absolutely not the right leader for our school. As the Board that sits in front of me tonight, you are the last resort that we have come to, given that all other avenues have failed us. Longley Way needs a new principal. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kelly Chen.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Chen. I have been a Longley Way parent since 2015. Throughout the last seven years, I have volunteered each year to help my children's teachers, served on the PTA Executive Board, and for the last three years, worked as a lunchtime proctor. I would like to share my very difficult experiences this past school year working as a proctor. As proctors, our main objective is to keep students safe and remind them how to play safely with one another and use playground equipment appropriately. Like most schools across America, we all experience an increase in aggressive behavior among some students, mainly due to the effects of the pandemic and shutdown. Our team of proctors did the best we could to help defuse student conflict that had escalated to physical violence. However, it was very clear that these students that exhibited such behavior needed more than just proctor intervention. Throughout the year, we have sought Ms. Arena's help in how we could handle these situations through both email and in-person discussions. She seemed receptive and appreciative of our feedback, but never provided any solutions. I personally would offer ideas and suggestions, such as having students that require discipline to pick up trash using a grabbing stick, but she quickly shut me down on those ideas. I asked, what else could we do? And was told that we would have a proctors' meeting where she and the school counselor would provide training and tips. No meeting was ever mentioned after that. As the school year progressed, instances of physical violence and bullying perpetuated. I was very frustrated that we kept seeing this kind of behavior from the same students with no solutions or improvement. I sent an email to the principal pleading for some answers and help as to how to handle these situations. Ms. Arena replied that there would be a meeting scheduled that subsequent Friday, but it was only after another follow-up and reminder from me that she finally responded and confirmed a meeting date. When the meeting was finally had, Ms. Arena did not use any of the time to provide helpful information or answers as to how we should handle such student behavior and violence. When many of us tried to voice our concerns and questions, she would not hear us, ignored us, and talked over us. The meeting became extremely hostile and nothing was accomplished. It is extremely sad that while on the surface Ms. Arena talks a lot about appreciating us, understanding what a difficult job we have, and how we will work together to succeed, the reality is that she did not seem to respect us enough to communicate effectively or collaborate to find solutions. I could no longer work in such a toxic environment with a leader who I felt continuously put children's safety at risk, does not come up with effective solutions, and on top of all this, seemed to look for reasons to intimidate or fire me since I was not willing to stay quiet about the issues at hand. I loved working with the students and the teachers, but it was with a heavy heart that I decided to quit. Though I quit, I was still very much a part of the Longley Way community. Only about two weeks after I quit, my own son was physically hurt by another student. But the school did not inform either my husband or myself of the incident. A week later, the same son was punched by another student. Same lack of communication. My son bore no responsibility in either case, except that he was the unfortunate recipient of the other student's anger at losing a game of punchball. And though we inquired of the principal and later Dr. Forsy as to why we were not even told of these incidences and what was being done to ensure our children's safety at school, no satisfactory answer came. My accounts here are only a few instances that I have observed and witnessed firsthand, and though many more have gone unheard or unspoken of. Not only have I resigned from my job, but I also decided to pull my children out of Longley Way this year because we no longer have any confidence that as long as she is the principal of this school, that our children will be safe there. Longley Way needs a new principal.
Our next speaker is Michael Yao.
Good morning. My name is Michael Yao. I would like to tell you why the entire March elected 2022-2023 PTA Board at Longley Way decided to collectively step down at the end of last school year. Many of us have volunteered and served on this PTA Board for years. So, this was not an easy decision for us to make. We pride ourselves with the sense of community that our parents, teacher, students, administrators have created for Longley Way throughout the years. However, the challenges that we faced throughout the year with Principal Kelly Arena ultimately made these issues unbearable. It was difficult to communicate with her and even harder to work together year over year, even during pandemic. Longley Way had a very rich history of PTA events and programs. As this past school year progressed, we grew frustrated with each successive initiative or activity was met with robots, unwillingness to work together, or simply the lack of integrity and backtracking, even on statements made during recorded meetings. We could not continue to support this type of leader that was demoralizing the community that we have all worked so hard to build. And then ultimately, our decision was solidified when several members of the Board seems to be retaliated against and were denied admittance to campus. I urge you to further investigate and do your own due diligence as to whether this is the type of leader you would like to have in the Arcadia Unified School District. Longley Way needs a new principal.
Our next speaker is Nikki Kwan.
Hi, my name is Nikki Kwan. I am a concerned parent who has had the privilege of sending my kids to Longley Way for the last six years. In addition, every year, I consistently volunteer countless hours to the school and donate thousands of dollars to Longley Way and AEF. For five years prior to Principal Arena leadership, my experience has been incredibly positive. A dream elementary school in an ideal school district. That all changed last year with Kelly Arena's leadership. First, she misappropriated my donated funds and outright denied it. I donated $1,000 towards the school January snowman fundraiser for classroom supplies, as was stated in the distributed flyers in the principal's email to the parents, and I even verbally confirmed with her before I donated. So, I was completely blindsided when she said she used the funds to purchase library furniture. She carelessly brushed my concerns aside and said, "Classroom supplies, library furniture, same thing. It's not." Second, she lacks the interpersonal skills for Longley Way community. Parents at Longley Way are highly educated, and we understand the nuances of words. We like to be spoken to as a positive partner in education and not spoken to as her subordinate, nor in a rude and disrespectful manner. Third, inadequate disseminator of information. She is supposed to be the subject matter expert here at school, but throughout this year, I had to go beyond the principal to receive correct information, and it was extremely unproductive use of time when we had to keep clarifying with the principal on the things she misrepresented or continue to second-guess the accuracy or validity of her information. These and many other negative experiences have destroyed my faith in her leadership. I, along with other parents here tonight, as well as impacted parents who are not here because they fear retaliation, cannot stand by and be silent to what is happening. Our children's future, safety, and mental wellness are at stake. Longley Way needs a new principal. That is a better fit for the Longley Way community and Arcadia so that our students can thrive in a positive environment and be the first party on any agenda. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate the time spent. And as I mentioned earlier, we cannot comment or respond. And we do appreciate you making your comments, and you have been heard. So, appreciate it. Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have our student representative report. Anvita?
Welcome back.
Good evening. My name is Anvita Malapati, the 2022-2023 Student Representative to the Board of Education. Tonight, joining me are members of ASB's Executive Council. To introduce their names and roles. But before I ask ASB to come on up here, I would like to share a few words relating to my gratitude and vision for the coming year. The Arcadia Unified School District is undoubtedly one of the most advanced, innovative, and progressive school districts in the nation. With over seven-plus schools and over 3,000 students at the high school itself, students are taken care of in terms of their academic welfare and preparation for the world beyond high school. This advancement and care would not be possible without the backbone of our school district, which is our very honorable Board of Education. On behalf of the Arcadia High School student body, I would like to sincerely thank you for your dedication and commitment in doing what's best for students. The time you spend planning, implementing, and creating truly echoes the love you have for this district. It's an honor to work with you, let alone sit on the same panel as you, and most importantly, I look forward to learning from you. I hope to use my voice as an anchor to represent Arcadia High School and to bring AUSD to greater heights. With that being said, ASB, please come on up here.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce our 23... 2022 to 2023 ASB Executive Council. We do have 23 members in our Executive Council, and they're going to introduce by their name, position, and grade. So, starting off with me, hello, my name is Benjamin O. I am your 2022 to 2023 ASB president, and I'm a senior.
Good evening. My name is Kaylee Wong. I'm a senior, and I'm the 22 to 23 ASB Vice President.
Hello, I'm also a senior. My name is Phoebe Wong, and I am the 22 to 23 ASB Treasurer.
Hello, my name is Shannon Chang, and I'm a senior, and I will be your 22 to 23 ASB Secretary.
Good evening. My name is Ashley Love, and I'm a senior, and this year, I'm the 2022 to 2023 ASB Historian.
Good evening. My name is Felicia Wu, and I'm a senior, and I'm this year's 2022 to 2023 Clubs Commissioner.
Hello, I'm Joshua Tran. I'm a senior as well, and I am your 22 to 23 Activities Commissioner.
Good evening. My name is Addison Khan. I'm a junior, and I'm your 2022 to 2023 Publicity Commissioner.
Hello, my name is Lillian. I'm a senior, and this year, I will be the EDI Commissioner.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Tran. I'm a senior, and I'm the 2022 to 2023 Link Commissioner.
Good evening. I'm Brandon Chang, and I'll be your 2022 to 2023 Academics Commissioner, and I'm a senior.
Good evening. My name is Charlene Ying, and I'm a senior, and I'm the 2022 to 2023 Performing Arts Commissioner.
Hello, everyone. I'm a senior, and my name is Jocelyn Wang, and I'm the 2022 to 2023 Athletics Commissioner.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jamie Lee, and I am the 2022 to 2023 Spirit Commissioner, and I'm also a senior.
Good evening. My name is Christina Shu, and I am this year's Senior President.
Hello, I'm Isabella Lowe, and I am this year's Senior Vice President.
Good evening. I'm Cameron Cortez, and I'm this year's Senior Historian.
Hello, everyone. I'm Ian Chi, and I'm this year's seniors' Public Relations.
Good evening. My name is Jeremiah Dunn, and I'm a junior, and I will be this year's Junior President.
Hi, my name is Joyce Lee, and I will be the 22 to 23 Junior Vice President.
Hello, my name is Amber Chung, and I'm this year's Sophomore President. And Keely Sun is this year's sophomore Vice President, who unfortunately couldn't make it today. Thank you.
I will now be delivering today's student report. In the coming weeks, members of ASB's Executive Council will be joining me. So, to start off with, the ASB president has planned ASB's first all-school event, Back to Scoop, which occurred on Thursday, August 18th, after school at the rally court. Students were able to enjoy free sorbet activities and receive a big welcome from the student body. The ASB president has also organized freshman assembly to introduce the variety of opportunities Arcadia High School offers, such as joining organizations, clubs, sports, academic teams, and ASB as well. Next slide. Next slide. The main Back to Scoop poster was created by two talented juniors at Arcadia High School. Next slide. Thank you. Students are waiting in line to get their refreshing sorbets on this hot school day. A student is getting served fruity pebbles to top their sorbet. Seniors smiling together with their sorbets. Students play the "Not My Hands" challenge to try and feed ice cream to their friends' mouths. And students play the slapping whipped cream game. And that concludes the historian's presentation. Moving on, the ASB Vice President is currently in the midst of ASB freshman elections. The election informational meeting was held on Friday, August 19th, and the candidate mandatory meeting will be held on Tuesday, August 30th. Additionally, homecoming royalty elections will begin on Wednesday, August 31st. Recently, ASB has supported Link Crew in their freshman orientation to help incoming students become acclimated to the high school. The club rechartering process for the upcoming year concluded in July with a total of 34 AHS clubs being chartered. During this process, ASB's Executive Council examined all clubs against Arcadia High School's codes and guidelines for chartered clubs. The publicity commissioner has been overseeing all of the publicizing for ASB's all-school bonding event, while also planning and managing all of the physical and digital publicizing for homecoming. During Arcadia High School's Registration Week, which took place on August 11th and August 12th, the EDI, short for Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Student Committee, showcased their booth to recruit new student members for the committee in the 2022 to 2023 school year. Currently, the committee is in the process of recruitment and planning with the Clubs Commissioner to host a separate Cultural/Identity Clubs Day to highlight Arcadia High School's diverse culture. Link Crew successfully hosted freshman orientation, where they welcomed the class of 2026 to Arcadia High School on August 16th. A total of 86% of the freshman class attended, which allowed them to feel welcome in a new environment and meet their Link Crew leader, who will be there for them throughout their entire freshman year. Over the past two weeks, Science Bowl has been competing in a summer tournament consisting of 24 teams. They are ranked in the top six in the ongoing competition with many individuals highly ranked in their specialty subjects. The Speech Debate Team also held a summer workshop on August 2nd for incoming novices to learn more about the variety of events they can compete in. During the last two weeks of summer break, marching band and color guard completed band camp. Choir and orchestra also completed their one-week of music camp, and orchestras participated in the United Spirit Association's dance camp. On Friday, August 19th, girls volleyball had their first game against Claremont, securing the win with a score of 3 to 0. The Spirit Commissioner is currently planning for the upcoming in-person homecoming assembly on September 30th. Senior Council held Senior Sunrise on August 19th. Seniors enjoyed a sweet and salty croissant bar and did yoga together to commemorate the start of the school year. Junior Council has been planning for their junior class bonding event, where students can cool down from the summer heat, create cute crafts, and race peers on the field. It will be held on September 16th from 4:00 to 5:30 p.m. And last but not least, Sophomore Council has been planning for the 22 to 23 Prom Committee application process. They had their first meeting on August 18th, where they met their new advisors and began planning for their upcoming fundraiser. And that concludes the student report.
Thanks for coming, you guys.
Thank you.
We know you have homework.
Mr. Danielson, you're the last one standing.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So, Measure A is our parcel tax. And when that was renewed in 2017, one of the requirements was to continue our Citizens Oversight Committee, or COC, which has three primary purposes or expectations. First one is to review the expenditures within the parcel tax, to inform the public concerning those expenditures, and also present to the Board annually a report consisting of the committee's review and comments regarding those expenditures. So, tonight, I'd like to start by thanking one of our members who completed her term and will not be returning for another term, and that is Jennifer Tom. And then we have two members that completed their term but are returning for another term. And I'm sorry, I should say, each term is two years, and they are able to serve up to three years... I'm sorry, three terms, which is six years. Calvin Lynn and Sharon Van Kirk are returning as members. And we have one new member who is a parent, and that is Matthias Hubert. And our first meeting is actually next Monday. Looking forward to meeting him. And that's it.
I move that the Measure A Citizens Oversight Committee members, as read by Mr. Alslund, be approved.
Second?
Aye. Had to make that motion since I used to sit on that committee.
Yes, thank you. So, Measure A is our facilities bond, and that was passed, approved by our voters in 2006. This Oversight Committee has the same three purposes or expectations. And again, we have two members that completed their term and will not be returning. So, I'd like to thank Tiffany Lueng and Kathy Umani for their service on this Oversight Committee. We have three members that have completed their term and will be returning for another term, and they are Ailei Gardea, Susan Lawi, and Jennifer Ledesma. We have two new members joining us for a two-year term, and that is, they are Stanley Poon, who is a parent, and Sonia Martin, who is also a parent, but will be serving as an at-large community member. We continue to have two positions that are vacant. That is the business representative and a representative of a taxpayer organization. And so, as always, I am continuing the search to try and get those positions filled, and if we do, we'll bring those back to the Board.
Right before we do the motion, I was wondering if we could, when you guys meet with the Chamber of Commerce, maybe let them know at that meeting, because we have lots of business owners there, that we have a position open. Maybe we can recruit in that manner.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And one caveat is that the business owner is not a business that the district can be doing business with.
Okay, so an independent outside.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll go ahead and make the motion again. I move that we approve the appointment of the members read to the Measure A Citizens Bond Oversight Committee.
Second.
Good evening. I think it'll, oh, awesome. I know the screen will come up in a, shortly. As, as Scott works on that, I can just go ahead and get started and kind of remind, remind everyone that back in June, when I was up in front of you, sharing with you all the adopted budget report, that was based off of the State's May revise. And literally the day before that presentation, the state released the enacted budget, where there were significant changes to revenue. So the, the purpose of this budget revision uh, will be to reflect the changes that were in the final enacted budget, primarily the, the changes in our revenue sources. And hopefully you guys are, can see that on your screen? Okay. So I have a fancy waterfall chart that...
Can we get that one? I know, it's a good sound effect.
Oh, no.
If we have to crank, we'll crank.
Yeah, okay. So, so what I have is a waterfall chart that basically helps to bridge the gap in terms of where we were at adopted budget to what we're proposing with the budget revision. So the adopted, the adopted budget had us at a deficit in the general fund of $2.8 million. And with these revisions, we're proposing that the budget revision be revised. It actually improves to a deficit of just under $400,000. So over all these, all these changes that we're reflecting is actually an improvement to the overall general fund. However, as I'll get to in a minute, the unrestricted general fund actually decreases. It's, it's not as favorable as where we were during adopted budget, but the restricted general fund more than offsets that, the decrease in our unrestricted general fund. So I'll touch briefly on each one of these items that we're proposing to, to change in this budget revision. Starting on the left-hand side with the LCFF, the Local Control Funding Formula, and this is our primary source of revenue for the school district. You see there, on the waterfall chart, basically all the bar charts in gray are favorable changes to our budget, and the red bars represent unfavorable changes. The LCFF of $2.9 million, that is primarily, that reflects the increase in the COLA add-on. If you guys may recall, the mandatory COLA for 22-23 was 6.56%. And what the Governor had proposed in the May revise was an additional add-on of 3.28%, effectively taking the COLA to just under 10%. In the final enacted budget, he actually increased the add-on from that 3.2% to 6.2%. So effectively, our COLA for next year is just under 13%. That 3% increase accounts for that $2.9 million increase in LCFF. So the next item we have is Restricted One-Time Funding. Yes?
Because we have a new board member tonight, I'm gonna ask everyone if we can keep the initials to a minimum. So COLA is cost of living adjustment?
Yes, I apologize. Yes, I was trying to be cognizant of that, so with the LCFF, but yes.
We fall into it, and I find myself doing it after being on the Board for a few years. But I remember my first couple of years, and it was just like hair on fire, jotting notes and trying to figure them all out. So, anyway, and I appreciate that you did define LCFF, so thank you.
Yes, so the, the COLA is the cost of living adjustment, as Board Member Chavez mentioned. It's basically the primary factor within our Local Control Funding Formula that increases our funding. So it's a cost of living adjustment. Every year, we basically, there's a percentage increase, hopefully, that we, that we see, and that, that increases the revenue for, for the district. Next, we have the Restricted One-Time Funding. So it's an increase of $12.3 million, and that is a combination of two block grants. The first one being the Learning Recovery Emergency Block Grant, and the second one is the Arts Music Instructional Materials Discretionary Block Grant. The Learning Recovery Block Grant makes up about 55% or $6.7 million of the 12.3. So the remaining balance of $5.6 million is the Arts Music and Instructional Materials Block Grant. We haven't received too much information in regards to the allowable uses. It's very, what the state has released is very broad and just general terms that they've shared in terms of allowable use. So there'll be more to come on this. You know, what we're reflecting here is just the, the revenue, the revenue that we'll be receiving. Next, we have the Unrestricted One-Time Funding. So unfortunately, in the May revise, we had a one-time discretionary block grant, which was unrestricted funds. That has since gone away. And essentially, as you can see, it seems like we basically, they, they replaced the, the one-time discretionary block grant with these two restricted block grants. So the one-time unrestricted was $10.8 million, so that's a decrease there. Next, we have ELOP, stands for Expanded Learning Opportunity Program, and that is funding for our elementary schools. And this is just expanded learning initiatives. And unfortunately, with the final enacted budget, they decreased the ADA, the funding per ADA for schools with lower unduplicated pupil counts. So unfortunately, the ELOP grant that we were gonna receive was decreased by $730,000. Uh, next, we have, and now we're kind of getting into the expenses, the expense components of the changes to the, to the budget. The additional classes I have there for $680,000. Although it's an increase in expenses, it was something that we were happy to add, because this is primarily the additional classes that we're adding. We're adding four classes at the elementary schools due to higher enrollment. And this includes, we've got a TK class that we're adding at Highland Oaks, a first-grade class that we're adding at Communa Grove, a second-grade class at Holly Ave, and a fifth-grade class at Baldwin Stalker. We're also adding, it's about one full-time teacher, FTE, across all the middle schools, again, due to higher enrollment. And next, we've got what I've referred to as SPED, that's for Special Ed and TK. The $160,000 there is primarily for the additional Special Ed classroom. We have an SDC class, Special Day class, that we're adding at Highland Oaks, and that gets funded through restricted funds. And we're also, what's in that $160,000 is also supplies for our TK classes. And the reason why it's unrestricted is because we do have that Universal Pre-K Grant, that's a restricted fund that we're gonna be using for that expense. Next, we have $140,000 for roving subs. So the $140,000 covers approximately seven weeks. I think the plan initially was to have a roving subs for the first seven weeks of the school year, just in case, you know, if something were to happen and we had absences from teachers, that we would have that coverage, and that amounted to $140,000. Lastly, the classified positions. The $90,000 was primarily for the, the cost of converting three school nurse positions to full-time. And it also has adjustments for two office positions, small adjustments for office positions. So with all that said, that gets us to a deficit of just under $400,000 in the revised budget. Next, on this next slide, all I have here is, it's basically just the fund form of what I've shared. On the left-hand side, we have our adopted budget. In the middle section there is what I've proposed, what we just went through. And on the far right is the revised budget. What I'll just note here is, I know there's a lot of information on here, but in the middle section, this is where you can kind of see the change in the unrestricted and the restricted general fund. So you can see there, unfortunately, on the, at the bottom in the middle, the unrestricted column, you see that the unrestricted general fund is decreasing by $8.9 million. However, it's more than offset by the increase in the restricted general fund of 11.3. And overall, it gets us to an improvement in the general fund of $2.4 million, better than where we were at the adopted budget. And so, with that said, again, on the far right, you'll see that the change in fund balance with the revised budget is a deficit of just under $400,000. And one thing I'll mention is that with the restricted funds, as I mentioned, you know, there, there's not a lot of information that we have with the restricted one-time funds yet. But what we'll do, as we always do, is we'll ensure that, you know, once we get more information on that, we'll look to exhaust those funds first. We always prioritize using restricted funds, looking at anything that we currently incur in our unrestricted general fund, and ensure that we apply those funds to the restricted funds. So hopefully, we get more information and there'll be more clarity in our first interim report. With that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
That's the smallest projected deficit we've seen in a long time. Am I wrong?
Yes.
Okay, so, yes. When we are talking about the total general fund, now I know it's difficult to see, but if you look bottom right of this table, in that blue bar going across, you'll see the, the third from the right is the unrestricted revised budget. The second from the right is the restricted. Those added together are the negative 384, which is a very nice-looking number. But the number that I focus on is on the unrestricted, the negative $9.7 million deficit. That will improve. Like David said, this 45-day revision is really just about a change in revenues, and, and we did add some of the expenditures that we've added, primarily the revenues. By December 15th, when David presents first interim, we'll have the revenues updated with our new enrollment numbers, right? These enroll, the revenues are driven by our projected enrollment numbers, which are lower than what our actual enrollment is right now. So the negative 9.7 million, I'm not worrying about right now. I'm, I'm just, we'll wait till first interim to see that. But that's, that's the number that I'm focused on and that I worry about, but it will improve by first interim.
So the expensive, expenses have been updated, like the staff are in here.
Yes.
Or the new enrollment, but the new enrollment is not in here.
And so that's why, I mean, the, the prior slide showing that change in revenue from unrestricted to restricted, that's really a big change that we felt like we needed to bring to you sooner rather than first interim.
That's where they take away the local control.
They, yeah, they do. You're right.
They, they don't give us money that we can spend wherever and however, yeah.
One of them is more restricted than the other. The Arts PE Instructional Materials Block Grant, you know, they gave us very brief descriptions on what we can spend on. One of those was operational costs. So that is a very broad category. But I'm, I'm proceeding slowly because I, I don't want us to go down a path and then by December, hear something different from the state. They, they had this tendency lately to apply restrictions later on. I'm kind of, we're playing a wait-and-see right now.
Go back to that other slide, Scott, with the really eye chart. It does seem like, looking at the ending balances, like we're, we're going from 40% unrestricted, 60% restricted, to 20% unrestricted, 80% restricted. It's a very, very stark difference. Yeah, going to your, having a local control funding formulas.
Mr. Brown.
Yes. And I would add, as long as I'm being the, the doom and gloom guy tonight, I would add that a fair chunk of our unrestricted ending fund balance is committed for specific purposes that David presented at adoption. You know, all of, you know, some of our, our TOSA, the Teacher on Special Assignment positions are funded with one-time money. Some of our, our positions at the elementaries and those kinds of things are funded with those one-time dollars that we earmarked for those purposes. Now, ending fund balance is always one-time money, but it's the difference between we have a plan to spend it versus it's there for us as a reserve. But that concerns me also. Not tonight.
And, and one thing I'll add, I don't want to get ahead of myself, but, you know, I, I'm currently working through our year-end results for 21-22 actuals. Corinne and I are our accounting supervisor, so we're, we're planning to close very soon, and that'll be shared with the Board at the next Board meeting. But one thing I just wanted to mention, because, because Raymond had mentioned the, the ending fund balance for the unrestricted general fund, that will improve because with, you know, this was based off of our projection for where we thought we were gonna end 21-22. So the beginning balance here was a projection in terms of where we thought we would end 21-22, and it's gonna come in better.
That's the bottom left, the 20.6 million.
Yes. It's gonna come in a few million dollars better, as it typically does. So these numbers will improve, as Derek mentioned. And, you know, during first interim, as we kind of like realign expenses in terms of what we can charge within the restricted one-time funds, that'll improve the unrestricted general fund balance. Yeah, and with that, I think I just asked that the Board approve the budget revision? Thank you.
I'll move to approve the budget revision for 22-23.
Second.
Information. Hey, the new agenda, man, it's hard to, we're all figuring it out.
Three riveting policies I know you're all waiting for. Just real quickly, Board Policy 6142.3 Civic Education. We're aligning that, as, as we've mentioned in previous Board, Board meetings. We're aligning that with the new Board Association number. It used to be Science Instruction. You'll notice, next, we'll be talking about the Board Policy, Science Instruction. This particular policy talks about this, it basically just states that the standards and guidelines for instruction in civics and government are included in the standards for curriculum. Actually, not in this policy, but it's actually in the standards. But it does specify that the high schools can get voter registration forms from the Secretary of State, as requested by the school. It also, our policy provides examples of how to distribute those forms. And then lastly, it says that the last two full weeks in April and the last two full weeks in September, as high school voter education weeks. So just to make sure that we're getting out the news to vote. So that's pretty much that policy. The next policy is 6142.93, which is Science Instruction. This policy is basically just updated to meet the new education code regarding science instruction, and that's basically the California Next Generation Science Standards, NGSS, and the science framework in public schools. And so it spells those out. And it says that we have to be fully implemented, including updated instructional materials. And I know the Board has been presented with lots of NGSS, so we're on the path to do that. And then it further clarifies the use of hazardous chemicals, and that we have to have a, a chemical hygiene plan for, for staff, just to make sure that we're safe. And the last policy that we're bringing is Class Assignments, 6152. That name is being changed, I believe, from student grouping to class assignment. And several... And several laws have changed regarding this. Most of it's around placement in mathematics, uh, placement in courses. One of the things um, that AB uh, ten, twelve did was uh, some districts, we don't actually do this in our district, but some districts actually place students in this, a course that they've already taken, just because they don't have any other place to put them. And so this, this legislation now prevents schools from doing that. Uh, and then, but lastly, it directs individuals to utilize the uniform complaint process for any non-compliance with ed code regarding the placement of students. And that's it. So what, any questions on any of those policies? They're pretty straightforward. And then if we, we'd like to request that you bring this back on consent if possible. Cool, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome back, everyone. I know we got the theme out as forward together, and that was after many conversations at the end of last year about how people were feeling and what they were looking forward to. If I had to do it over, I think our theme would just be simply normalcy. Because on the, the week bef, the lead, week leading up to school, as we were having the uh, open, the registration days and parents were back on campus, staff coming back, uh, it just truly felt normal. And, and I've heard many people share how, you know, last year we were all trying to convince ourselves that we're back and it's normal, and then it's like, but do we fist bump? Do we elbow? There's a lot of, lot of questions, a lot of hybrid thing, events, uh, events that we didn't continue to have. And it feels really good to say, it really feels normal this year. Uh, so many of the PTAs at all of our sites have already began to, begun to calendar uh, events for the parents and for the students that they so much look forward to. So uh, it was a great start. Uh, there's some people I want to thank, and we're going to hear a lot from three sixty of the organization about the startup of school and what's going on, uh, sometimes behind the scenes. But it's hard to get to the beginning of school without talking about what goes on over the summer. So I really want to thank Tony Barrios and his crew, Melinda and Gabe with the custodians and maintenance first. Uh, while so many of the uh, parents and staff are home and we often say, you know, have a good summer, enjoy the break, they're going full force and, and that's when they kind of step it up. And you know, that's every room, every classroom, common area in our entire district gets a deep cleaning over the summer. And with so many events going on, like summer schools and camps, uh, that's no easy feat. There's a lot of logistics moving around and making sure that every one of those classrooms, every child and teacher comes back to a clean and safe environment. There's nothing like a fresh waxed floor. I appreciated it when I was in school and I continue to appreciate it. And uh, First Avenue's new tile floor in the lobby and down the main hall and that fresh coat of wax is, is beautiful. Uh, and then there's the maintenance, you know, uh, we really value routine maintenance, meaning that we don't wait until things break to fix them. We have a schedule that's out years and we have money that we put away in our budget to ensure that air conditioning units uh, are clean, new filters, you know, ready to go so that when we do hit the heat of August, September, uh, that we're not all of a sudden running around, you know, with air conditioning units, units break. And when all those things work well, you just don't think about it and you don't hear about it. Uh, but it's due to the planning over the summer. So uh, just a special thank you to all of them and their crew. I had the, the luxury of first dropping my kids off at Communocrove, uh, as they were excited for their first day. And then uh, shared my first, first day of kids back with the elementary um, with uh, President Fenton Ning at Longley Way. And uh, spent some time in, in the drop-off line first, uh, welcoming uh, kids in and watching them all take the pictures in front of the school, which is that annual tradition with all the creative signs that uh, parents make for them and make them, make them hold rightfully. Um, and then uh, you know, got to walk around as kids were, were going in for the first day and, and then attend the first PTA meeting. Uh, I know I've been hearing the enrollment numbers, uh, so it's, it wasn't too big of a shock, but I couldn't believe it, how many new families I was introduced to. Two mothers that, that each were sharing their stories of, of having twins and having twins in, at Longley Way. So I jumped in that conversation, it was a therapy session. Um, and uh, you know, and I, I couldn't say it better, their first activity with the PTA, a great crowd was, you know, there's nothing just routine about coming back this year. It's not like you can say, well, you know, all the activities that we do every year, because it's been a couple of years since we've done, we've done routine activities. So it's a real opportunity for reset, you know? And I think that's kind of our theme of opportunity through uh, the pandemic was really looking for the, we're going to be a lot of challenges, but where can we be a better organization? And so they started after introducing each other, uh, introducing everyone in the room was just brainstorming. What are all the activities that you've really missed and you look forward to having this year with your kids? Maybe you came from another district? What are some activities that you did there that were really successful with PTA? Um, so it just, you know, I'm really excited and looking forward to that reconnection as we move forward together. So um, that was a way to also say thank you to all of our parent army of volunteers. Uh, because when I was in that room, looking at the, the parents in there and the one standing in front is the PTA leaders, those are the folks that stand up, you know? And, and, and uh, you know, are willing to stand up and lead and run logistically a lot of our registration days and first day, not just for their child, um, but for all kids. And so, and I'm saying that, looking at faces of board members that I know were uh, all around at different sites, including the high school, helping with those, with the registration day. So um, we could not do what we do, starting teaching and learning in Arcadia on the first day of school, without our parents and without the PTAs and the volunteers that we depend on. And they just do an incredible job and they do it with a happy heart and a smile, which creates that wonderful experience for a lot of our new families. So um, just thank you to everyone that made our opening a great success. And with that, we'll start with business services, Derek Esslin.
Thank you. Now, I'll start with the Performing Arts Center, uh, which is back open for business for rentals. Keith DeLuque and I were talking the other day and they've had interest, they're in conversations with up to uh, six events already so far, which would be amazing. Our hope and our plan is to get maybe somewhere between eight to ten events, uh, rental events into the Performing Arts Center during the school year. That's about the maximum that we can fit in with all the student group events. Um, so we're, we're looking forward to a good year in the, the pack. Uh, in the area of fiscal services, uh, David Vong already mentioned the unaudited actuals coming at the next board meeting. You may remember our best project, which is the new accounting system uh, and human, uh, human capital management system that the, the county office of education is rolling out. Uh, we had a meeting with uh, Laco officials recently about the cost of the implementation being increased. Uh, you may recall that we signed an agreement with the county to pay an added cost over the span of five years, to pay a portion of the implementation. Districts paid about half of the cost, county office of ed paid about, paid the other half. With COVID, uh, with delays, uh, with cost increases, they are asking, I don't know if asking is the right word, but they are asking to extend those payments for three additional years. Yeah, so going to a total of eight years. It's about a hundred thousand dollars a year that we've been paying. Uh, fortunately, we did not take that money out of the budget, so it's not going to impact our budget. We just won't see the savings that we would have otherwise. Uh, there was a lot of pushback from some districts uh, on that call, so I'm not sure where that's going to land. Um, but uh, my expectation is that we will absorb those costs.
How long do we anticipate that system being in place? Like, do, those don't change over very often, do they?
They do not change over very often. Um, the systems that we are using now, PeopleSoft and the Human Resource System, they have been in place for at least twenty years, if not longer. Now, the difference is that when the county implemented those systems, they, uh, they modified them. They specialized them so much that they couldn't be updated as the years went on and as the man, the vendor, the manufacturer of those systems provided updates. So we're stuck in like nineteen ninety-three or whatever the year is. So one of the tensions that we're experiencing right now with the new system is that Laco has, I think, very smartly said, we are not going to do anything that will prevent us from upgrading the system when the man, the vendor comes out with upgrades. So we'll stay current, but that means a lot of districts have had to modify their practice because the, the county is just unwilling to, to tailor it to their requests, which I think ultimately in the big picture is a good thing. But hopefully it'll be twenty, twenty more years before we do this again.
We'll be paying for half of the life of the thing.
Yeah.
And just to clarify, the hundred thousand is in addition to the ongoing fifty thousand.
Yeah, our ongoing costs for the programs are about fifty thousand and they say that that should stay at that level once the implementation is done.
Is that like per capita-ish cost, like how does, how do they calculate that?
It's actually, there, there's a few different ways they bill us. It's, it's more about how we utilize the accounting system. Like, for example, one of the charges is per account. You're charged about a dollar or two per account that we have in the system. Uh, we get charged for the reports module. So it, it, a portion of it actually, you're correct, is about our staff, like FTE-based, full-time equivalent, when you're looking at the, the human capital management side of things. So how many people you have in the system increases the cost. Yeah, but it's a, it's a several pages of calculations that they come up with that. Okay, uh, moving on to facilities and operational services. Uh, I am happy to share that we were awarded uh, the CalShape award, uh, grant. That's the California Schools Healthy Air Plumbing and Efficiency Program. And I've never heard anybody call it that, it's CalShape. This is a new program, there's a, uh, an HVAC, uh, the heating and air conditioning portion of it, and then the plumbing portion. We received a one point five million dollar grant on the HVAC side of things. Um, this is actually the third round of awards. We were not eligible the first two rounds, those went to uh, schools with higher uh, populations of needy, media students. The third round was finally opened to all districts. So uh, with the help of Pacific West, who we've worked with in the past, they helped us uh, get our application in the day it opened, uh, just to get our place in line. Uh, so this funding will be able to use to have uh, an outside vendor come in and do a very in-depth assessment of our uh, heating and air conditioning units. We're able to replace filters and do some general maintenance and adjustments of the systems. It's not about replacing, it's about getting your existing systems up to grade and also uh, having that thorough assessment done so that we know what our costs will be in the future in terms of replacement. Uh, which I, you know, as David mentioned, like our, our maintenance staff does a great job of, of having that information on hand already. Uh, one of the interesting parts of this is that it also includes carbon dioxide monitors. And what I learned actually as a result of this grant is that you may recall a couple of years ago, we installed uh, building controls in our classrooms throughout the district, the, the HVAC controls. Well, the units we installed actually contain carbon dioxide sensors so that if for whatever reason the level of CO2 goes up in the classroom, the unit act, automatically kicks in, you know, to, to uh, improve the air quality. So what we think we'll be able to do is actually use up thi, this portion of that money to get reimbursed for those purchases from two years ago, which would be fantastic. But again, this is all very preliminary, not much detail yet. Uh, and like I said, Pacific West helped us apply and we're exploring possibly working with them in the future for this, this um, work to be done. Uh, in transportation, um, our special ed transportation is off to a great start. Uh, sometimes, some years that's been difficult to get everything figured out, but it's gone very smoothly this year, thanks to the staff, both in special ed and in transportation. They are just working really well together, doing a great job. Moving on to uh, purchasing and risk management. Uh, I mentioned the best system already. Uh, we're going to be uh, hosting a training, a, a virtual training that uh, Laco is going to be doing for our staff for the purchase requisition and the budget um, review portion of the system. So this is for our, our users at the sites and in the departments. That'll be this Friday. Um, they'll be, it's a refresher, you know, they got training back in June. They went off and had great summers and forgot everything and now they're back. So we're, we're doing a refresher. Uh, and then also, once that's done, uh, Jaime Morales and Lucille Chu in our purchasing department will be available to schedule, you know, local onsite trainings as needed. Uh, but we wanted to do the Laco one first, see if that covered it, and then we'll provide the support as needed. Uh, on the safety side, uh, as part of our annual notification to employees, uh, we included an updated uh, personal safety training uh, document that um, provided the latest information to our, all of our staff on uh, dealing with active threats on our campuses. And related to that, the week of September sixth, uh, our um, our JPA, which is a joint powers authority, but it's, it's our insurance, it's an insurance collective that we're in together with other districts. But uh, um, staff from our J, our insurance JPA will be conducting threat and security assessments at all of our campuses. Uh, and we will get a report on how that went, uh, about a month or two after that, uh, they do that assessment. And lastly, but still a lot of good information is nutrition services. So we have had four full days of school with all of our grades. Last year we hit about five thousand meals a day at the end of the year. Right now, we're averaging about forty-seven hundred. So the, the, the demand that we saw last year came back very quickly. In prior years, we were at about thirty-three hundred meals a day. So the, the free lunch, the free breakfast, the free lunch for every student is really being embraced by a lot of our families, which is great. I know at this time of year, the question of how long it takes to get through the lunch line always comes up. So Kathleen Ashworth, our director, has done some work and she's collected some data uh, just from a couple of our schools, the, two of the middle schools. And she gave me a lot of data, but I, I think the best way to describe it is that on average, our students are waiting seven to ten minutes to get through the line. Uh, they're serving somewhere between seventeen and eighteen students per minute as they make their way through. Uh, it's Dana and Foothills that we have the data. They're serving between two hundred to two hundred and fifty students a day. So I, you know, that I think leaves the students plenty of time to grab a meal, sit down and eat and, and you know, enjoy the rest of their, their lunch break. Uh, and those times will go down, you know, once the kids remember their IDs and learn the process, you know, especially the little ones at the elementaries, i- i- the, the lines will go much quicker as time goes on. Regarding the meals and the uh, the nutrition guidelines, uh, nothing has changed with our federal nutrition guidelines, so all of our meals comply with these federal requirements. Uh, nothing has changed there, that includes the calories in the meals, the fat content, the sodium content. That all continues to be uh, defined by the federal government and the state government as well. One of the things Kathleen told me is that students are required to take three of five food items, you know, a meat or meat alternative, grain, milk, fruit or veggie. We want them to take three, they can take all five, you know? So if they're looking to have some additional calories in their, their lunch, i- it's always there for them. Students always have the option to purchase a second meal or an à la carte item uh, at the middle and the high schools. Uh, though that seldom happens, we sell very few second, second meals. And also I just checked with Kathleen today, the share tables are back and available, you know, they were. Um, and also I just checked with Kathleen today. The share tables are back and available, you know, they were, um, taken away during COVID because of, of that, but they're back now, uh, for those campuses that want them. So there's always that option for students too that are looking for a little bit more food. Just a quick financial rundown of twenty-one, twenty-two for nutrition services, and then I'm done. Um, total revenues last year were three and a half million dollars. Um, the revenue comes in, uh, on a reimbursement for every meal that we serve. Uh, that was about seven hundred and thirty-three thousand meals last year, just an incredible number. On three and a half million dollars, we had a deficit of ninety-five thousand dollars. The expenses exceeded just by ninety-five thousand, tho- that, those revenues. That comes out to a loss per meal of thirteen cents. So that is not great, but it's much better than when we started the year. Things really picked up as the year went on. The more meals we serve, the better we do financially, and Kathleen and her team, Francisco Diaz included, have just done an amazing job and they've picked up right where they've left off. They're doing a great job. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks for, for pointing out the, the deficit, like how much the district loses on each meal. Cause I think when people hear that the food is free, they just assume that it's not costing the district anything to do it, that, that we're being provided the funds to make that service available.
Yeah, the, the state, because California said breakfast and lunch is free, they've increased the, the reimbursement that they provide, but it's still, it's four dollars and seventy-nine cents per meal, which, uh, you know, so that, that takes some doing, uh, to get the meals under that amount.
And before all this, it was nutrition services was pretty much self-sufficient, right?
Yes, it was. Yeah, thank you for asking. Prior, prior to COVID, it was a self-sustaining program. During the worst of COVID, I think it was like a million dollar deficit. Yeah, so, um, to, last year, you know, everyone was back, meals were free, uh, the state made the meals free, not, not the federal government, but they just did an amazing job. Every month, you know, we look at the monthly financials, it got better and better every month, so it's a great story for them.
We don't see a change in revenue.
It's gone up this year. Um, so we're at a, the four seventy-nine is a higher reimbursement rate than we were in prior years. Um, I think if, if fingers crossed, you know, the, the economy continues to do well, do okay in California, you know, we're experiencing some, some hiccups. Um, I, I suspect the governor would like to add to that reimbursement rate in the budget for next year, but that's a, a very long way away. I think where we are right now is where we're gonna be for the, for the entire school year.
But while the rates increase, we all know food prices have increased. We're, we're all feeling that, so I, I'm not certain we're doing that well on that from that standpoint.
Yes, and, uh, I feel like it's been a while since we've gotten a letter from a food vendor, but I could just be selectively forgetting. But yeah, it, uh, I, I mean, I, I think the, the, the food cost that Kathleen pays is it's sort of directly linked with the inflation that we're all experiencing in the, in the broader economy. So, I mean, gas prices coming down a little bit, you know, so fingers crossed that it improves. And actually, I do recall Kathleen said to me that she thought, she's heard that maybe by January, food costs will, you know, start to come back down.
Derek, I wanted to clarify that, uh, although the federally funded Meals for All, uh, program is new this year, the actual meals that we're providing are the same meals, the same makeup from calorie fat, like you said, the same type of meals that we were already serving last year. That did not change.
Nutrition guidelines have not changed. We've always, uh, they relaxed them slightly during COVID, but it's, it's back to normal now. Yeah, and last year it was as well.
Just, uh, just last question. Is she, are you, are we still experiencing, you know, like, under shortages and, you know, the supply chain hasn't gotten better so that?
Again, I haven't heard anything from Kathleen lately.
Yeah.
That, that may be because they've gotten so good at figuring it out at the last minute, but, um,
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. That's a good question. I can ask Kathleen, or she'll let me know. Yeah, I, I do feel like things are very slowly starting to get better.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
Non-food question. Um, going back to the, the CO2 monitors, uh, that's really, really neat. Is it possible, maybe on a Brian Amber, maybe DCI could do like a little video on it? It sounds like it'd be really cool to show off that, that whole feature.
I think it would be an excellent idea for them to do that. Yeah, no, honestly, I, I did not know that we had CO2 monitors built into those, those controls, so that was a nice surprise. Um, cause I know that the state is starting to require for some new construction, certainly where state funds are involved, that you have to now include carbon dioxide monitors in classrooms, so uh, it, I'm just really, was really pleased to hear that. Yeah, and I'd, I'd love to get that info out there. Yeah, I will talk with Brian tomorrow morning.
Thank you. You both.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Derek. All right, next, Dr. Forsey with Educational Services.
All right, wonderful start. Um, was sharing with the team last Wednesday and Thursday. Uh, not only, besides being exhausted, uh, that was, uh, the most excited I've been as a professional in three years, and it was just a completely different feeling than it's been for a few years and, you know, back to normalcy, uh, which also brings the exhaustion. All the things that, that we, we weren't used to doing, um, and I think I heard more teachers, uh, and just, you know, people at school talking about getting back into school shape. Um, so we're, we're, we're getting back there. I think this week is a little, little less tired when we get home, so we're getting there. I have a lot to, to, to go overnight, so I'm gonna read it because there's a lot of details in here. I don't wanna screw them up. Uh, the theme for this, uh, update will be pilot, okay, and not the, the plane type. Uh, from Daniel. Uh, the extensive piloting process that AUSD undertakes to choose the best and most engaging curriculum for its students. He wants to share the process for our science curriculum. Elementary School Science, uh, TK two is piloting three textbooks, Savas, National Geographic, and Discovery, all before spring break. Grades three through five are piloting two textbooks, Amplify and Twig, all by the end of January. Elementary school teachers should make a decision on which curriculum to adopt in May two thousand twenty-three. Now, we say pilot and that sounds easy, but each one of these pilots involves teachers coming in, um, being a part of it, digging into the curriculum, uh, planning together how they're gonna work and pilot. So there's a lot of work that goes into that. Um, and a lot of this was done, again, during the summer. There was a number of teachers in here at the end of the summer before school started, uh, doing a lot of this work, and it will continue um, during the school year, but I've been amazed at the commitment of our teachers to be here during the summer to get some of this work done. Middle School Si- Science is on their second round of pilots because they were not satisfied, uh, with Savas and Amplify, which were piloted last school year. They're piloting TCI and Discovery this semester, all by winter break. The Middle School Science teachers hopefully will make a decision, uh, in January, so we can begin to order those materials, bring them here and move forward. But again, um, that reestablishes our commitment that we're not going to invest in these core curriculum texts until our teachers say, yes, this is, this is the best, we will use this, this is what's gonna help our students in our classrooms. Ordering books to sit on a shelf doesn't help anyone, and so that really is the lens that we're working with our teachers on. Is, is this gonna help you be a better or more efficient teacher? Is it gonna help students in your content area? So, so you might continue to hear, we're not there yet, we piloted, but we did, we chose not to adopt yet, and that, that will continue, um, in the, in the growing years as we hopefully put a little bit of pressure on textbook companies to continue to refine, uh, what they bring to us. High school chemistry and physics update. Uh, the high school chemistry and physics teachers are going to pilot two textbooks, HMH in quarter two and Savas in quarter three. A decision about which curriculum to adopt for those, uh, two subject areas, again, will be brought, uh, back to this body in May of two thousand twenty-three. For Dine, elementary schools are busy with initial assessments of all students. Teachers began initial benchmark assessments for start of Renaissance this week. APCs and English Language Development teachers are working on assessing students for placement in their specific programs. Hagerty, which, uh, the previously piloted program has been exp- expanded to all t- school sites TK through first grade. This is a tier-one phonemic awareness curriculum that provides daily lec- lessons focusing on eight phonemic awareness skills, along with activities to develop letter and sound recognition and language awareness. Lessons are designed for classroom setting and only take eight to twelve minutes. So we saw some of the Hagertyan use in our learning walk last year, and this is when we talked about MTSS. This is one of our tier-one in-classroom, um, interventions that every teacher TK one will be using to make sure our students have that strong phonemic awareness, so they will become, uh, more efficient readers. Uh, John Tong, our, our newly developed ELOP coordinator. He's taken on ELOP, um, our Extended Learning Opportunity Program, which is the program that the state, uh, implemented this year. Uh, we heard a little bit from the budget revision that they, they shifted the amount of money at the very end last year, so there's been quite a few adjustments, and we are partnering with Right at School to offer that, um, service as they, they are a provider for after, before and after school. So we currently have two hundred and eighty-three students, uh, that were registered on the first day. Uh, Right at School is currently hiring and training staff to accommodate another three hundred and fifty-four students who wanna join, so that will make uh, over six hundred students in our ELOP program, which is, uh, far larger than any after-school program Arcadia Unified has ever offered. So there are a lot of students, a lot of families, um, being served in this, through this program, um, and quite a bit of interest, um, with our families. Uh, most students for Rancho, most students have returned to their comprehensive site, sites, so as a comparison, uh, currently, we have thirty-two online students TK eight. As compared to last year, at this time, we had a hundred and eighty students online TK eight. So, um, many of them are going back and even more, um, are in that process of returning back to their, uh, their homeschool. Uh, Andrea, initial LPAC testing, which is our English Language, uh, testing for our students. With the start of the school, new school year comes new enrollments and new students to assess for English proficiency. Last year at this point in August, we tested approximately ninety-three students. This year, as of today, we have tested two hundred and fifty-four students to determine English proficiency for testing. Obviously, we've seen a great increase in the number of students coming. Now, all of those students, um, may not enter the English Language Development Program. They may test and be determined to be initially English proficient. Um, when we talk about the return to normalcy, though, we are seeing travel. We are seeing families, um, again, choosing to migrate into Arcadia, which has been part of our history for several decades, and so that is another indicator, um, of things, you know, getting back to normal. Uh, like to thank our ELD teachers, our TOSSAs, our LPAC testers, as they spent a lot of time, um, as students enrolled and even currently getting those tests done, so students can get the supports and, and appropriate placement. And, uh, almost last, two more. Swag. Our Collaboration Day swag catalog was sent out this week for educators to participate in their small working Arcadia groups. Educators have the option of selecting from the following menu of topics. There are fourteen traditional courses, twenty-six Java-like groups. So by traditional courses, we mean where there was input, um, one of our staff members put in, hey, I'd like to, to have this course. There was enough, enough interest from their colleagues to, to validate that being a course, so there's fourteen of those. There's twenty-six Java-like groups, um, where, you know, grade levels are working together. And then there are two, uh, PD groups, which is something new we've added the last few years, focusing on Schoology and MTSS that will meet, which is more of a directed, uh, professional development swag group. And lastly, Schoology. We're excited to share that we have started our Schoology pilot. Uh, TIS and Ed Services are working closely together to learn more about this platform and support teachers that are piloting it in their classrooms. We have approximately a hundred and fifteen teachers that are piloting Schoology this year, which is approximately twenty-five percent of our staff, um, that will be doing that this year. Again, if, if teachers want to onboard during the year, we will make that available, so it's not you're in or you're out. Uh, but we have a hundred and fifteen now, and we are committed to doing this for, uh, this year and next year, and then making a decision on, are we gonna move forward with this, um, or will we stay with Google Classroom? And that is my updates for tonight.
And the Schoology pilots happening at every level?
Yes, yes, every school, every level, um, and we have, Andrea's done a great job, um, leading that. We have, uh, you know, leads at every school. So there's people there that have said, yeah, I not only wanna pilot, but I wanna get more training and be a lead. So there's somebody at each school site that if you have an issue, have a question, you can go there instead of, you know, emailing or, you know, more timely, uh, more effective as we know, and you put the resources at the school sites. So we're really excited about the commitment and engagement from the staff to give this a real shot and, and see is this the right fit for us.
Twenty-five percent, that's a good amount of futures to pilot it, so.
I, I, I think we were surprised at how, how many people, um, really, and it, and it wasn't, you know, we need someone, please. It was, it was real genuine interest, so. And a lot of work again done this summer, um, so really excited about where this will go, and there will be, there will be peaks and there will be valleys, and, and we'll work through those, and that's part of the piloting process, and again, working with TIS and, uh, Scott's team, uh, really hand in hand has, has been a, a wonderful experience.
I can say my daughter's, she's got a few classes using it, so she's been mentioning it lately. Yeah, so, well, it's.
It'll be different for kids that have different classes.
Exactly. Yeah, so that's the only, I think, yeah, some, so not all the, so twenty-five, I mean, but it is quite, cause my daughter, like, she has a few teachers out of her six classes, so, the high school.
We'll know more in two years than we know now.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Dr. Harishy, Human Resource Services.
Right. So on behalf of Health Services from, uh, Nurse Erica Newkirk, Health Services is, is excited to welcome our students back. We have been busy reviewing students' health needs and ensuring their needs are being met so they can best access their educational environments. We are grateful for parents completing required health forms, immunization records, and other health documents during this very busy time. Uh, we are continuing to monitor the Department of Public Health Guidelines for COVID-nineteen and other infectious diseases. The most, uh, recent COVID-nineteen guidelines have not significantly changed our practice from the spring of two thousand twenty-two. Uh, we will continue to provide masks to students and staff upon request and will work to ensure that COVID-nineteen testing is accessible to all students, staff, and volunteers. Uh, we are working with families to make sure they understand how to self-screen for symptoms at home, and will continue to notify individuals of possible exposures. We continue to, to adapt our practices and to cha- uh, to the changing public health requirements, and will consider additional mitigation strategies like vaccine clinics depending on interest and need. Uh, moving on to Special Education from Dr. Catherine Mahoney. We have had a wonderful start to the school year. Uh, thank you to the many departments, principals, school site staff, and parents for making the start of school so smooth. The Human Resources Department worked tirelessly with Tracy Surgi and Cecilia Griego in our Special Education Department to fill instructional aid positions over the summer. MOT collaborated, uh, collaborated daily with us to ensure students had a wonderful transportation experience to and from school. Uh, our bus drivers are so integral to helping students have a great start to their school day. Uh, moving on to some, uh, new initiatives, uh, we opened an additional elementary special day class at Highland Oaks this year to support increased enrollment. Uh, and then we are in the planning stages of a new Selpa Goals class at Hugo Reed. Uh, this year, we have created additional means of staff connections with staff newsletters and a department resource, uh, website for staff. And finally, our TOSSAs completed trainings with instructional aids just before the start of, uh, the school year to set them up for success. Um, moving on to instructional aids, our strategy of converting IAs to, uh, full-time uh, positions has really helped us from a retention perspective. Uh, Catherine shared, uh, here are some data that typically we've seen like a thirty percent turnover in staff, and this year that fell to about a ten percent turnover, so significant decrease. Um, so we were ready to roll day one with instructional aids, so super happy about that. Moving on to HR, uh, as you know, Moving on to HR, as you know, enrollment is coming in strong. We're super happy about that. As of our enrollment data from 8/22, our numbers, we have at the elementary level, we are 114 students over projection. At the middle school level, 73 students over projection. And at the high school, 90 students over projection. So we're doing really well. At our next board meeting, we'll be doing our enrollment and staffing deep dive. So I'll let Scott cover, you know, the, all the enrollment data to compare apples to apples year over year. But we're very excited about this positive trend. And then, of course, as a result of our strong enrollment, all three middle schools added staffing in the last week. I can tell you in my 10 years here, that has never happened. So that's really exciting. And I want to thank our principals at all levels just for being incredibly flexible to add staffing and classes where needed as we've, you know, been moving with our real enrollment data throughout the summer. So they've done a fantastic job. And then, of course, as we start the year, we have continued our practice of hiring roving subs to help us better respond to absence needs. Now thankfully, we have not needed them to cover a lot of COVID absences or anything like that, but we, you know, wanted to be prepared. And of course, it's that time of year when all staff are trained in the mandated reporter training, which is annual for all staff. And all staff are required to complete this training by September 9th and HR will monitor that. And then piggybacking on Brent's, the year of the pilots, we are this year piloting a new teacher evaluation system. So you may recall that we have been collaborating with ATA over the past three years to design a new teacher evaluation system, which is called Ongoing Professional Development Process. And so tomorrow, we'll be meeting with ATA and our partners with E3, which have helped facilitate this this multi-year process to finalize the planning of the pilot and roll that out in the coming weeks. So we're very excited about that. It will be voluntary for staff so they can either opt in or not and we'll get lots of great feedback and and refine and iterate as needed. So that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions.
That's big news.
Yeah, it's exciting, very exciting.
Was there another COVID casualty in terms of how fast it moved or is that the timeline that we planned?
Well, you know, we'd never hit pause on that. And it's interesting because I actually had a phone call with Jill, our partner at E3, and several districts did. And so it was really great that we actually leaned into that work over the pandemic to continue that planning. So it's worked out really well. And I think timing wise, this year is a much better year to roll out a pilot than, say, last year. So and really our driving, I guess, you know, as we've been working with ATA on this is let's, let's do this in an organic way. We'll know when we're ready to launch. And really, it became pretty clear at the end of last year as we were negotiating that we're ready, we're ready to move this forward and try it out. So I think we're in a really good place.
All right. Greg Gazanian, Strategy and Innovation?
Good evening, everyone. All right. So I'm going to start off with testing. As Dr. Hrishu already mentioned, from the beginning of our testing program, we've been focused on sustainability and scalability as needed. And I'm pleased to share that we are able to meet those requirements this year as well. So we'll talk about two types of testing real quick. One is mandated testing. There are certain cases where we need to do response testing when someone has symptoms, when someone needs to come back to work, when someone falls under a mandate of when they need to test. So we always need to do that. So examples of where we do that type of testing are at the school sites. So if a student suddenly becomes symptomatic during the day, we have the capacity to test them on campus when they need to. If someone needs to test to come back, for example, they can also pick up a test before they leave because you have to wait three to five days in some cases. So we've kept that capacity at the school sites as we've had last year as well. Another type of testing that we've had over the last few years has been elective, non-required testing. As you may recall, we had the Testing Center here at the AAC where anyone could go get a test for any reason. And in some of the updates you've probably heard, we've shifted away from having someone down at a testing table and we've shifted to an automated kiosk system. In effect, you may have even seen it as it's tucked underneath the stairs over in the corner where anyone can come for the same hours as they have in the past year to pick up those tests. And I want to talk a little bit about how we came to the conclusion that we wanted to do an automated kiosk. Last year, we saw great fluctuations in the demand of testing. In fact, I believe in the first few days of school, we had a request for 200 tests and then after about a month, it went down to 1023. And obviously, we like having someone down there. It was very helpful to have someone answering those questions. However, people know what to expect with testing now. They've likely taken the test themselves, given it to other people. And what we're finding is people value that speed of going in, coming out and having the ability to scale capacity based on our machine out there. So we're going to continue to utilize that and scale as we need to. If we need to bring someone back in because demand increases significantly, we have the ability to do that. And in addition, the system that we designed with that vending machine, automated kiosk out there allows us to add more machines if we ever need to. So that's been really a great project. And there are too many people to thank, but I just have to thank Technology and Information Services for helping us get a lot of this set up. Maintenance of facilities for running electricity, for example, purchasing, and certainly my assistant, Terry Rademacher, who's had to order a lot of the supplies to make this happen. So it's been a really rewarding experience to get that set up. We'll continue to monitor it, but feedback has been very positive. We've launched yesterday morning and we've already vended or distributed 40 tests through that. So we're going to keep an eye on that. Overall, feedback's been very positive for testing this year. Dr. Hrishu also mentioned enrollment. I won't get too deep into it tonight, but we are working with Hanover, our research partners, to understand when students do request permits to go to other public schools and other districts, why they are going. So we're going to go through a lot of that data. We're working with them on the report. And during the staffing enrollment presentation, we'll go ahead and share some of the results from that as well. So we've been processing that. Grants, you know, I've talked a lot about the types of grants that are requested through our Strategy and Innovation Grant Program. And I'll touch on that a little bit. You know, we're getting a lot of requests for apps. This year, we have some school safety requests, which is exciting. I'll touch on that in some future meetings. And even literature in reading, apps and supplies. So it's been exciting to see people getting used to the grant program and requesting them. But one thing I really want to mention that I'm excited about this year is just our deep partnership with Education Services Department. Anytime, you know, grant request comes in, if it's technology, I have some background of that I can call Scott. A lot of times it is curricular and we want to make sure that it fits with the vision of curriculum and education in Arcadia. So I've been able to reach out to Danae and many of the other members of Ed Services just to talk through these things. We want to make sure we're always on the same page when we do this, when we're doing pilot to make sure it fits. So I've really enjoyed our partnership with Ed Services this year. We're continuing to work through that and see where we can use this grant money and resources to continue to try things. Very excited that we submitted a presentation proposal to the California School Board Association for the conference this year and it was accepted. Very exciting. And the title of the session is How a Year of Listening Saved Us Years of Arguing. I'm guessing that was a popular topic to explore this year because there's a lot of arguing going on in the world of education. So the proposal was about our year of building our purpose statement and values and really how through the entire pandemic, how we went back to those values and it really carried us through and gave us a common ground for having those conversations. So I'm looking forward to that presentation. Dr. Van Oostal and Board Member Chavez will be joining me in that and we're looking forward to doing that presentation this year. And finally, in terms of, on the topic of listening exploration, many of you probably remember that we're doing exploration around diversity, equity and inclusion this year. In fact, we've already had some really good conversations with our admin council about what are we already doing? What are those programs in place? We have a lot of wonderful things happening throughout our district. As we did with the purpose statement and the values, we're going to do a larger engagement with our community. This will likely be at the end of September, although we're going to work on getting that information out soon. But the goal really is to listen and engage and learn about the perspectives and where people are at. So we're looking forward to doing that. We're going to continue to share information here as we have more information around that. So overall, it's been a wonderful start to the school year and looking forward to more. Happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Congratulations on getting the CSBA presentation accepted.
Thank you.
Yeah, very exciting.
Congratulations to all of you for carrying out the values so diligently. I think that was really what sold it. So we do what we say we're going to do and that's a big deal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan Faran, Communications?
All right. Good evening, everyone. Amber and I spent a good portion of the summer updating our website and specifically the COVID information on there. So that has been updated. Big thanks to Erica and thanks to her and Amber. We also sent out Coronavirus Update 78 last week. And as Kevin mentioned, really not much changed from the end of last year. So we actually did not get one question back on it, which is really good considering we sent it to thousands and thousands of people and we've had questions before. So that was really good. Arcadia First Day, our annual campaign, year nine this year was very exciting. Thanks to everyone who participated, teachers, parents, students, staff, board members. Really appreciate it. We do it for obvious reasons. Picture is worth a thousand words and we got, how many pictures this year, you think? Yeah, about 800 pictures. So that's a lot. So it was great. Our interns made a couple of videos already with all the pictures. We have a huge album and a huge thanks to Amber too. She processes every single one of those that come in on social media. We get emailed, which is 800, and responds personally to everyone who sends in a picture and says, thank you. And the response we get back from them and their appreciation from the parents was great. So thank you, Amber. It's a lot, lot of work. What do I do? I don't know, but thank you, Amber. Appreciate it. Speaking of Arcadia First Day, for a lot of families, it's their first day in the district, which is fantastic. We're thrilled to have them. We know they have choices where they, what cities, families move to and big reason is why they choose where to live is the schools. So we're thrilled to have the new families. Amber and I will be reaching out to our new families personally as well, just to see how they're doing in our district for the first time, what support they need, if they have any questions, just to provide that personal touch to them. So we're going to do that this year and just make sure everything's going great for our new families because we're thrilled to have them. DCI, we're already up and running. This is our eighth year of DCI. We're super excited about it. We have an informational meeting at the high school on Thursday at lunch for prospective new interns and students who are interested in joining. And then applications will be due on Sunday. We have some ambitious new projects and exciting things in the works as well that we'll keep you updated on. But that is happening. So we've already got some interest from new students who are anxious and already have their applications submitted. So we're excited for another great year. New Educator Academy, thank you to everyone who participated, especially in the draft. Thanks to the board members that came and cheered on the new teachers and staff, the principals, big thanks to them. They did an amazing job introducing their new recruits and we asked them to do a lot. They have everything, they have school about to start and they come and really make it special for their, their new staff. So we really appreciate what, what they do. Amber again did an amazing job with that. Of course, thanks to Andrea for four days of just great New Educator Academy. ABC Seven did a nice little short but sweet story on the New Educator Academy. That was really nice to see. We put out the videos. We have the whole video out there. If anyone's interested in viewing that, we put that out today and sent our YouTube. And thanks to our breaking news reporter, Jim Anderson, as well for his part. We're glad he's still with us and hasn't been poached by ESPN or Fox Sports. Very appreciative of that. Last year, at the end of last year, we were honored to be recognized by CALSPRA, the California School Public Relations Association, for a few awards. NSPR, the National School Public Relations Association, we just got some awards in the mail, three Golden Achievement Awards, one for NEA, DCI and AUSD Today. So that was awesome. Then Award of Excellence for the excellent COVID-19 infographic that Amber made. So that was nice to get some national recognitions for a lot of the work that our students do. And a big welcome to our new student rep to the Board of Education. Speaking of DCI, Anvita, she's been in DCI since her freshman year and has just been amazing. Our new AUSD Today award-winning segment that we started last year, Anvita's done a lot of those and just done an incredible job with her storytelling. So we are thrilled to have Anvita in DCI again this year and she'll be an amazing asset to the Board of Education. She's also just this week named our Student Managing Editor, which is the highest position in DCI. So she has just earned that. So if you're looking for videos, she oversees the video manager. So she's really has more power and pull than me or Ms. Duvalli. So got to go through Anvita, but she's always the first to raise her hand to help out. So welcome, Anvita. That is my report.
What I heard him just say is Mr. Faran is going to take credit for any of your future success from here forward.
She knows how it works.
Any questions for Mr. Faran?
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And just a few things going on in technology over the summer as we roll out new Chromebooks for many of our students. So Scott Ramley with Technology.
I first would like to share that the last few weeks of summer and the first couple weeks of the school year really are one of the busiest times in, in technology. It's always busy, but there's, there's lots of reasons for that. And the boardroom decided to demonstrate some of that tonight with technology that sits for periods of time sometimes don't function the way they're supposed to. So I'm going to start off with a couple of challenges we've had, and I wasn't planning to talk about the boardroom, but since it inserted itself. We discovered yesterday that the projector, we thought the bulb was dead. We discovered that the projector was dead. So we moved the projector from the back of the room to the front of the room with the great help of our maintenance staff. And then the screen decided it didn't want to come down. And so the maintenance staff helped Chris get the screen to come down. We got everything working, tested it all at 5:00 this afternoon and the DAS monitors decided not to work tonight. So that's just kind of how it goes when, when hardware decides to be finicky. The great opportunities that we have are to reimagine what our boardroom technology looks like at this point, since we definitely will be replacing some equipment here in the near future. This summer, again, with the help of the maintenance department, I don't know where we'd be without Melinda and her staff this summer. They worked with our project manager, Chris Kearns, to remove the projectors in over 400 classrooms district wide, which was an awesome task. We tested out some of the removals at the end of last year to, to try to make this go as smoothly as possible. One of the challenges that arose from that is we had sound that wasn't working after the projector removal in several classrooms at different sites throughout the district. So we've been working around that. One of the great things about that is the monitors provided flexibility for us to be able to reroute the sound through the monitors. And so we had, we had a plan in place where we could get sound working in classrooms where we have this issue and we will be working to repair the sound in those classrooms over the next couple of weeks. And then if that wasn't enough, our iBoss content filter on Sunday morning decided that it wanted to get in on it and a piece of that hardware failed. And so it appeared that we were going to come back to school on Monday without any internet content filtering for our students. So we quickly worked Sunday afternoon and Sunday evening to reroute that all of our traffic through our cloud internet filter, which has worked great, but staff that are used to not having as strict a content filtering spent the last two days with, with, with student content filtering. And we got that hardware replaced this afternoon at about 3:30 or 4:00. And so we're back up and running as normal with our content filtering. So hardware failure at this time of year always seems to occur and we just improvise as quickly as possible and make things work. So big shout out to Brian Anderson and Amin Chowdhury for, for getting that functioning on Sunday afternoon. And several other things that I would consider accomplishments and successes at the end of the summer and the beginning of the school year. Number one, TIS is fully staffed. I haven't been able to say that in over three years. So for three years, I would like to thank Kevin and his staff for helping us get fully staffed, but it was just one of those things when the pandemic started, we, we had turnover in a few areas. So it was really nice to start a school year during all this rush, fully staffed and have people in place to take. and have people in place to take care of the issues that arose. So we're really happy about that. One of the things that most people probably never gave a second thought to was July first, we cut over from Crown Castle as our internet service provider to Spectrum. And all of it went very smoothly in July, but we have no way of load testing that connection prior to the return of staff and students to our site. So we were monitoring very closely our network performance. And I'm very happy to say it went very well. Our network performed very well during the first week and plus of school, and the internet connection seems to be functioning very well. So that's a tough one. It's an E-rate project. You know, we have to go out to bid for that project and accept the lowest bidder. And oftentimes, in the past, those services are not actually connected till midway through the school year. And we were able to cut over on July first and have that connection up and running. So that was very much a success. This has kind of become old hat, but it's never a small job. We received, configured, and delivered twenty-seven hundred new Chromebooks to all of our schools. All of our grades TK and K, grade one, grade five, and grade nine students either have or will very shortly have their new Chromebooks. And grades one, five, and nine are an every-year distribution. TK and K will get new ones every four years, and those are still in the classrooms. But so that distribution has become just a normal part of our process. But it's a big job for Marco to receive twenty-seven hundred Chromebooks, deliver them here to the AEC for us to unbox, configure, enroll, and box backup for Marco to deliver to the sites. And then the library aides at the sites distribute them. So it's a big team effort to handle that many devices on a regular basis. The theme of the night seems to be pilot. We are in the beginning stages of a pilot with Google for a product called Cast Moderator. It is Chromecast for classrooms. It's wireless projection and screen sharing capability for both staff and students that we believe will eventually be in all of our classrooms. But Google provided us a hundred devices free of charge, and we are starting to install those now. It's a code-based system, so instead of students just being able to cast any device they can see, there is a code on the screen. The minute they enter that code and cast their screen to the monitor, that code is no longer valid. It remains, their session remains valid until they're either disconnected by the teacher or they disconnect. That way, students cannot send the code to somebody in a neighboring classroom to interrupt the connection with something inappropriate. And it seems to be working very well. It's something we've asked Google for, for a long time. And just in July, when we went to ISTI, was the first time we actually heard and saw the product, and we're really excited about it. The products that we were looking at as an alternative were six hundred to seven hundred dollars apiece with ongoing licensing fees yearly, every year after that that we use them. These are forty-five-dollar Google TV Chromecast that do more and function better than their devices we're looking at. So we're really, really excited about the possibilities of this. And our feedback to Google to this point has been make them available so we can buy three hundred for the other classrooms. So we're excited about that, and we'll keep you posted on that. Brent already mentioned Andrea and the SchoolAGI pilot. I do want to give a quick shout out to Chris Kearns, our project manager, who's been working very closely with Andrea in coordinating all that. A rollout for a student information system or a learning management system are the most difficult implementations a school district can do, in my opinion. Student information systems are worse than learning management systems in terms of the amount of work that it takes. But a learning management system, it's unbelievable. I know Andrea, I tried to tell her how much it was going to be prior to the start. And we keep having this conversation where we agree that it is a lot of work. So thank you to both Chris and Andrea for coordinating that. And then finally, some exciting news. Because we're fully staffed, we've been able to kind of readjust our support for the school sites for the first time in several years. And one of the focuses of that, I wanted to be to provide better support for the high school. And so for the last five or six years, our technicians have each taken a piece of the high school and supported that, but with all of the other sites that they're supporting. Sometimes when you have a piece of something, you don't have the buy-in that you do when you have a single person supporting that site. And I'm really excited to share that we have put Nancy Sager in charge of support at the high school. And in addition to that, included in that is the start of a technology internship at the high school. And we have, I believe, eight or nine students in period, spread out between periods two and period six. The focus of the internship will be customer service, maintenance, and update and repair of Chromebook devices, and getting those turned around for students when they need to make exchanges in a faster manner than we currently do, and possibly even doing it for all Chromebooks in the district at some point. But this is the start of that, so we'll keep you posted on that and share more about it as the year goes by. But we're very excited about the potential for that. They've already started with cleaning and updating and getting devices back in circulation. They've been helping teachers and Nancy with adjusting monitors, monitor heights, and getting a taste of what it is to provide quality customer service to staff and students at the high school. So we're very excited about all of that. And that's my report.
Did the unexpected increase in our enrollment impact how many Chromebooks we were able to get into kids' hands?
It did not significantly impact it because we always have a cushion. Where it could impact us is needing to turn devices around that get turned back in for whatever reason faster than we have had to. Although it's hard to need to get them turned around faster than it was during the lockdown year because that was something we'd never quite experienced before. But we do have a cushion, and we always have the devices that are outgoing where we can kind of save a few of them so that we have a cushion. So yes and no, but not a significant impact.
All right. That concludes our reports, Mr. President.
I will move to approve consent items A through M.
Take it.
Aye.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. President. So many great reports, so I want to make a comment on each one, but I won't because we'll be here all night. But thank you, everybody, for everything, all the reports and all the updates, all the hard work everyone's done over the summer to get us ready for hashtag Arcadia First Day, which is really great, like just being out and about. And I think the theme of it kind of being very normal is very true. Like, it just seems like very normal first day. Everyone's really happy to be back and just smiles everywhere. I was so happy to go to, you know, back-to-school events and just talk to families all around. And just people are so excited. And even drop-off, like, seemed to be more calm, too, you know, which is, I don't know.
Okay, high school.
My high school kid rides his bike to school, so I don't have to do drop-off. Definitely welcome to Anvita. I think you come fairly highly recommended, and you're going to do a great job this year. So so happy to welcome you to our DIES year. Do you want to thank all the folks who worked on the Measure A and Measure I?